And it is time. And we're going to start the regular meeting on your library board. So first, do we have any public comment? Ms. Virginia? Any public comments at this point? Okay, anyone else, anyone online? No, right. Then. Treasurers report, see, remember where to look this time.
The finance committee members have made a recommendation that the board approved the bills consisting of forty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars and twelve cents.
Forty-three, yeah.
Forty-three thousand, yes. Forty-three, six, six.
Oh, really? Forty-eight.
Forty-five, forty-three, six, three, four, eight.
Yes, sorry, I copy. He's been obvious when something is said. Whatever they say. So I saw that the board approved these bills.
A second.
All in favor? I.
I.
Our consent agenda for this month. We have approval of the minutes of the meeting held February thirteenth. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting held February nineteenth. The building committee report of January twenty-fourth, a building committee report of February twenty-eighth. An outreach committee report and a president's report. Yeah, I know. You can eliminate president's report, I mean, Upper Hudson report and the admin committee report. We'll double book it next month. And the Upper Hudson report is built into the president's report. So I'm making a motion to accept, approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second? In a second? All in favor?
I.
Now onto our regular agenda. Number one is our community survey.
So we have community surveys in your packet, but we have some changes that we're making to it. So I just wanted to quickly go over those before we move on. So the third line in the opening paragraph, instead of the please complete the survey for yourself, please respond to the survey for yourself or your child dependent, so that we're not using the word complete twice in one little paragraph there. These are all just semantics, the thing has changed. We're going to put lines where it says other, so people realize that that's where they could fill that out. You know, that they have space to fill out. We did want to. And question number four, information on the board of trustees or other friends. We're going to separate that into two questions, so we know whether it's for your trustees or friends. Interlibrary loan is a hyphenated word. It's a library. Question five, again, interlibrary loan was creating, fixing printing services, we're going to make two lines into printing, scanning, and then another line for faxing, since there are two different machines are used. We're going to add library of things as a choice as well. And then a question twelve. In which Troy neighborhood do you reside? We're just going to add a box for not a Troy resident, so people don't get confused if they're not. I don't know, anybody else has any other?
Reminded that I was thinking that perhaps it would be good to put neighborhoods that are sort of close to one another together. So like, it starts with South Troy, but then South Central Little Italy or Osgo are can be considered part of South Troy. If they were together, it might be clearer as to how people should answer that.
Okay.
Well, historically, Little Italy would never consider themselves South Troy.
Yeah.
South Troy started at the canal.
Yeah.
Right, well, that's what she's saying, she just wants them to be listed near each other, so people realize that we're not considering them together.
I think we have a comment from.
Yeah, you guys should be able to, people won't, first, I recommend, because I've done these. If someone is against library funding, does happen in Troy, they can bomb you and setting a setting a unique identifier, like email per household will keep people from doing that, because you just tend not to do that, even if they're thinking about about bombing you. And second, if you put your address, if you have people put in their address, you can map their neighborhood and just create a heat map. It's actually a pretty easy thing to do, if you let people pick their own neighborhood, you kind of get skewed results.
Right. The only problem we have is that we wanted it to be anonymous, so so that people feel comfortable filling it out, so.
I have seen very small, easy surveys get bombed hundreds of times, and you don't really have
Good results.
to go with. And if you just get a little bit of information about people, you can then slice and dice the demographics. I mean, if there's just a couple of questions you're going to answer, put your email, how can we identify you? We're not going to share your email address. People feel very comfortable doing that.
How does, how does everybody else feel? Can you verify bombing? I'm sorry, I don't.
So we can just go in and they can, and you can get an IP mask, and they can just go in and take the survey many times and skew the answers. And then what you end up with is just kind of garbage information, it's not reliable.
Then they can fake addresses too, though.
It's a lot harder to continue to make fake, I mean, the more steps you put into it, the less likely someone is going to be to actually make a problem.
Thank you.
You can also filter out repeat IP addresses. But people can mask an IP address pretty easily.
Thank you.
This will just be done by electronically, right?
No, this is, it'll be a hard copy as well, but you know, so that way we have a little bit of control over that, but yes, I understand what you're saying as far as. Do we need to address this now in order to approve this? Since we're approving the hard copy.
I'd say, just to keep this thing moving, no, we won't. How about we bring it back up in the next outreach meeting, which is Friday, and then we can answer that question, I think that might be the only major thing. Do you think, and I that we'll get the updated copy with all the changes in it by Friday? That would be great, and send it out to the board, just in case there's anything else that needs to be done. Excellent, thank you. I think, will that work for you?
It works for you.
Does it work for everybody? Okay. Then you want to make a motion?
So I make a motion that we approve this, the community survey as without edits.
Okay.
Although, that should be you, for me, I'll be able to those in favor. Do you say that?
You know what, is it really, I don't always stand on ceremony, so, but I'll say if you don't. All in favor?
I think they're doing. Yes, actually, you know, it's in our files.
All right.
Just, just for my own, sorry, talking about this, have we talked about how we're going to distribute the physical survey at all?
No.
Okay.
Well, yes, I'll let them, just, we have, besides at the desk, at any outreach, outreach events.
Okay.
And possibly just go out there and stay with them at like the grocery store, the grocery store that's not in charge, because we don't have groceries. But, you know, at the farmer's market, and, you know, although the farmer's market tends to be just for people, but they might be people who use the library.
True.
So.
Thank you.
And the committee has also come up with a list of different organizations and places that can leave card, hard copy as well as a QR code, as well as big events like the Troy one-hundred's coming up, and some other things, and it'll be ready to distribute there.
That's cool, thank you.
All right. So the bigger thing.
Yes, I want to, I'll have to use my directors before I hear this, make sure I cover everything here. The staff has, the Lancingburg staff has returned to the branch to put things back together and to reorganize, and we have had the delivery from Quick Response, so we've got all of our equipment and books back. Come to find out, when they packed the books, they may have packed some with water.
I know.
And so
Definitely did, because I was, I mean.
Branch librarian is studying how many of these books are actually damaged, and we'll get a the total.
There's some boxes, so, yeah.
We'll have a list for you.
In my response to Hanover's denial of our claim, I had asked them if their decision was based on an inspection of the roof at Lansingburg, and it turns out it wasn't. So how they determined our roof was old and deteriorated must have been just a guess, either that or it's an insurance company game. So they decided that they better inspect the roof. And they hired someone from EFI Global, an independent contractor, to come out and inspect the roof, which they did do. I wasn't able to get a copy of the report, because Hanover had paid for it, and it was to go directly to them, but I'll we cut the copy from Hanover at some point.
Didn't they recommend, didn't they recommend that you reach out to EFI Global to get a copy of the report?
Yeah, I already did, I said no.
EFI Global or Hanover?
EFI Global.
Okay.
They were a contractor for Hanover.
Yes.
Or yeah, Hanover. I keep saying Hanover. I don't know, it's just the area. Anyway. So the roof was inspected, and during that inspection, it was kind of unusual, because we were in the attic area. And even in that area, I never noticed how the water was getting in, but anyway. She said, well, this trust, one of the trusts had a major crack in it. Well, it was dark at the time, I was up there, and, you know, I looked, and it didn't look so good, and so I went back later to inspect it with some reasonable amount of light, and it's, it's sort of odd. There's a number of trusses that have pieces deliberately sewn out of them. These are two-by-twelves, and the pieces were probably in the neighborhood of two-inch pieces that were sewn out of a number of trusses. One of the trusses exhibited a crack that would be common to dried wood. So at this point, I'm going to wait and see if that shows up in the report, it may not. If it does show up in the report, we can contract or contact a structural engineer and so on, but probably at this point, I, I don't see, the roof, the trusses have been in that condition that they're in now for probably the last hundred years. So I'm not sure that it's even an issue this time. Okay, I got a call from Leslie Two, from the Troy Savings Bank Foundation, asking about our problems at Lansingburg, and we had a long conversation, and I sent her the information that I had regarding the insurance denial and our response. We talked again, and I, I invited Lori and Freda in on that conversation, and as a result, she wrote back to us that she invited us to submit a grant application. Now, the grant application needs to be from the Friends of the Library, because they are an official 401(c)(3). The library is not, so they would have trouble in the foundation giving directly to the library. But they can give to the, to the Friends. So we're working on that application.
Do you know what kind of size grants they've offered in the past?
Well, for this, for this, they are offering twenty thousand dollars towards the abatement of the the barrier plus the length, the ramp. And so we were before they invited us to fill out a proposal, they asked the Friends for accounting data for twenty-twenty-three, which we provided, plus a sense of what our reserves were. So having done that, then the head of the foundation then sent an invitation to us to submit a proposal, and that proposal is due on March twenty-fifth, twenty-nine.
Thank you.
In the meantime, I did fill out a request to the McCarthy Foundation, McCarthy Charities, in the amount of twenty thousand to support the Lansingburg project rather, and I wasn't specific, I don't think they need us to be specific on this particular case. So that has been filed. The ramp, I did receive a quotation from a company called Primary Care for an access ramp on the east side of the building, which would be on the east side entry door. And in order to be ADA compliant, you're looking at a fairly long ramp, so it would have you know, a mega, and two different platforms. The estimate with installation is about twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah. I will be asking one more company that's in the area, that serves the area mobility works, and I'm still waiting for their estimate. I got a feeling these estimates will be pretty low, but we'll see.
Could they tell you about how much time it would take once you committed?
We didn't really talk about that yet, this was a ballpark estimate, so it wasn't a written, now, this is your price estimate. So that's what I'm saying, I think a lot of these will be in the ballpark at twenty grand, I think, but anyway. My estimate in talking with him is it's going to take a while. I don't think, I mean, I, I don't think these people actually have everything manufactured, I think they'll go back and get this stuff built.
Yeah, they'll probably custom build every single time.
And then, and we'll set it up, and you know, all of that. And it looks like that could take a couple of months, anyway. Once we sign a contract. Okay, I talked to a couple of people, actually, this is going, some of this stuff is up to the minute. I did reach a vice president of claims at NFP, which is our agent. And I gave him the documents that I had regarding this whole incident. He had promised to follow through with Hanover and get back to me, so we're waiting on that. In the meantime, I had talked to Quick Response, and they had recommended a gentleman, John Ryan, as a independent claims agent. And I, we didn't you know, sign anything at this point, but I did send him some of the documents that I had. He's going to take a look and see if that's something that they want to, want to pursue for us.
See, a flying part of the organization or is it a solo practice?
He's independent, he's, yeah, independent, you know, agent, these are it's, it's recommended sometimes, you know, if you have a disaster happen, that you hire an independent claims adjusted.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's what I'm I'm going with at this point. You know, if he comes back and says, well, you haven't got a prayer, and, you know, beating this one, but I don't, I don't think they are, I think. I also sent him the estimate, the original estimate that Tecto America sent, based on what, you know, they were going to do with the roof. And it seems to me, most of that has to do with what I have said to Hanover, in that the cause is not the condition of the roof, the cause was the storm, the cause was the wind, cause was torrential rain. That wind separated the EPDM part of the roof from the shingles. And rain got in under, and now they, part of what Tecto America was doing in repairs was reattaching or booming down the shingles again. You know? That could happen if the roof were just put on. Whether, if it was brand new. But again, you get the right combination of, you know, strong wind and torrential rain, that could happen even to a new roof, so that's my contention, and we'll see how far that goes.
Let's talk about the storm, Keith, you were investigating emergency disaster declarations with the county?
I'm sure how he did nothing, didn't have enough to file.
I'm getting back to Lansingburg, I don't know, we've been sort of discussing and thinking about we could the staff has been back over there, the staff's been working over there. I asked Lori this morning, I said, when can you open? She said, Monday. So they could actually be ready to go back and open this place up, which I think would be a very good thing public relations wise.
Right, Lori, are, are you, are you and the staff at Lansingburg comfortable in committing to a timeline where the library is open and public by Monday the eighteenth?
Monday the eighteenth, yes, that's what we're planning on, that's what we've been planning on since the beginning.
Monday, March eighteenth, oh, wait, wait, wait.
Well, there's a few things, there's a few things we have to do, I'm not sure that I'll be ready, but
Yes.
those guys will be ready.
Well, the work that we need to do.
Yeah.
We will be ready.
Cool, thank you, that, that's, that was really my question, because there was, there was a lot to do there last time, so, great work.
Now, one of the suggestions, since we wouldn't have a ramp in place, so we wouldn't have that kind of handicap access in place. But one of the things that we can do to substitute at this point was to offer curbside service, which we did, of course, during the pandemic. You put a couple of signs out there and in the parking lot, and people can call you, call in, you know, and say, I need these books, and we bring them out. Actually, we still do that here, we do about, I think, a couple a week, still here. And I think that would plus the fact that, you know, you would say we are working on this ramp project, and even when we're done, the west side handicap access ramp is technically not ADA compliant. So if we do have one that is ADA compliant on the east side, all the better, I think, in the long run. So I think, you know, if we proceed with pursuing that, and also using the curbside service option, I recommend that we could open safely.
Do we have a date, like, open safely on? If not, March eighteenth, March?
Two weeks.
Three?
If he has to contract it, when he's going to be ready, two weeks.
Well, I just.
Seriously, we could do it in two weeks.
Okay.
With the ramp in place?
No.
No.
Oh, we're sorry, sir.
Not the ramp, no.
Okay, but.
The ramp's not.
Yes, we should have handy, a wheelchair ramp accessibility. Perhaps we can explore this more, whether the alternative that you are suggesting.
I have an answer for that, actually, because one of the beauties about also sitting with this Upper Hudson is I get to ask Tim a lot of questions. And, so he's been sending me information, in fact, he's at eight o'clock at night, he's sending me more. So one, he reminded Spox, reminds us that some of the libraries don't even have find all its answers, have ramping. First one. Diver and Menance, Menance was only finally made accessible last year. Diver still is not accessible. So it's not as if it imperative that every public library be accessible by law, but the idea would be closest possible to fully acceptable as possible, obviously. However, there was a follow-up, because Judith Wines, who is now, was the RCS directors now at Upper Hudson, talked to Mid York Library System, and they've done a lot of work on that topic, and their take is, as long as the library offers patrons the option of curbside pickup or something similar, they can reopen without the ramp. They need to provide some kind of accommodation service, so that patrons unable to use stairs can still access library materials and curbside counts as that accommodation. Technically, a library can get away with permanently not having an accessible entrance if they offer alternative access, but it isn't the best practice. So that was his answer. I see, so, under.
I was cheering.
Okay. I see Virginia in the background too, but I just wanted to finish this, that, so there are some other opinions about this, and I guess at some point, or today, we can say whether or not we can stand with the not quite ADA compliant ramp that we have once we open up that piece. And thinking about the consequences of what happens if we don't open up on time, and where that leaves us was another question, but I say on time, but early enough, and if this becomes a very long delay process, then what? So it's, it's a real balancing act here, but at least we have some answers to, and I understand where Kirsten's coming from, and, and I think he has a valid point of view, like, have all his answers from Kirsten, too.
I did speak with Kirsten, by the way, on this before he left. And you know, he felt that if we had plans, you know, to add the ramp, you know, that that would be fine, I mean, we could proceed to open and with the plans in place to, you know, do the ramp. So I don't think he was, you know, opposed to that.
I think we need, we need to do the ramp, but we're showing a way ahead here to get open while we get the ramp done, and it, and again, it's not like we don't, in this building, currently have a ramp at least until we get as far as any restrictions when the parapet, parapet gets done. But Kirsten did also have another thing that, that he brought up, and it's something we're going to have to do, I believe, which is improve some of the door hardware with emergency aggressive hardware. I'm going to tell you, that's not cheap.
They're looking at four thousand or so.
But it's, but, but we need to do that anyway, too.
I think before we go too far there, I think we have to take another look. Panic hardware is based, or the requirement is based on the size of the building and the possible, you know, how many people are going to be involved. When we changed the doors on Lansingburg, there's three exit doors that we changed. And I had panic bars put on all three exit doors. The representatives from TAP said, we don't actually, they're not required for us in that size building. They certainly wouldn't be quite required on an inside door. It certainly wouldn't be quite required on an inside door, which is what we were talking about. But they are already on the exit doors.
Virginia?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to find out that we had stick away open for years and there was no ramp, the steepest stairs in the world and no bathroom. So I understand having a plan to make sure we're accessible, but we've already clearly set precedent not required to have an existing ramp.
Well, in addition to that, even Lansingburg, before we opened up into the other side, that. That ramp was never used in that way because we didn't have access to that room. So for a long time, Lansingburg had no access till we moved it, we opened up into that other space.
Um another thing that might help opening um Lansingburg as soon as possible is the fact that. Uh once we posted pictures of the rain in the library, uh people donated nine thousand dollars. So there is nine thousand dollars that is in-house. In the friends' bank account that can be used. For small kinds of things that would make Lansingburg um uh more accessible. Not accessible in the handicap sense, but more accessible to patrons and we've already purchased a new bookcase. Who that is going to be for children, so it's already been purchased. And has books on it, thank you.
Can I?
So there were, you know, a lot's been happening.
Um Alex next, please.
Yeah, um I, I just wanna, I just wanna flat out say, I don't think we necessarily need a ramp. Um a new ADA compliant ramp, um I think we're already, already on the hook for a hundred grand of work, it's already happened. Um there's another hundred grand restoration work that needs to happen. Um I think we need to be very careful about the projects that we're gonna authorize to go forward with this. Um we already have a ramp on Lansingburg, now I was thinking about it, that space is a stabilized empty room. Right now, there's no construction going on in there, um it's not a danger to the public in any way. But frankly, there is a door, I don't necessarily even see why we would need to. Have it entirely closed off to the public if somebody needed to access the library through wheelchair. Um maybe we could escort them, I'm sure we can figure that out at the end, um but we don't need to take down the partition. Plastic, we reinforce that, so people aren't pulling it down off the wall, but I don't necessarily think we need an ADA compliant ramp. To open up and restore Lansingburg in any capacity at this time.
Am I gonna add that I think that it's very important that I am there and have been since, not this last Monday, but the Monday before that. And we get calls, we get people stopping by, and I think that it's important to take into account the fact that we would, if we were to open, we would be serving. A great number of people, certainly more than would be affected by the lack of the uh the accessible. And of course, we are willing to do curbside as well as work with folks who sit on through the side door, whatever.
I'm sure we could possibly accommodate anybody there.
You had something?
And I actually had a question about the status of a. Better barrier than hanging plastic between the occupied space and the unoccupied space, is that going to be done?
Yeah, the plan is to um actually use right now, um we gotta put a, some more two by fours, uh but uh. What I recommend that we do is use um just like water rich plywood and put that up. And if we go all the way to the top. Um it'll help um if we start reconstruction, you know, keep the noise down. So.
Thank you.
That's the idea right now.
So Alex, are you saying you don't believe we should in- invest in another rampant period?
Yes.
Okay, just like, not at the, like.
Someday in the future?
Some, someday in the infinite future.
Okay, all right.
So uh two points, uh one to Alex's comment, the interest of the uh Troy Musical. Uh Foundation is in the ramp. So.
Only the ramp?
The ramp and the barriers, so when they talk about this twenty thousand dollars, they're talking about those two things. Which is different from what Paul said when he said that he went to the MacArthur Foundation and didn't stipulate what it would be about. The second point, which is minor, but the bookseller has been closed since December. So we don't get a hell of a lot of income from selling books at the bookseller. But we have gotten no income from selling books at the bookseller. And once the library opens, since it's not in the affected area, we can once again open the bookseller. And perhaps extend the hours of the bookseller, it is also a service that aids library staff in getting rid of donations. Not getting rid of donations, right, that's another thing.
That's enough, so it's wonderful though.
Fred, you, you, you brought up something that I, I marked down as a question of how, if we don't go ahead right now with an ADA compliant. What would happen to that grant, the question is, do they, were they interested in the ramp because it was broached to them? Or because they approached us and said, we wanna get your ramp and they had maybe no understanding that. That might be something that we should pursue.
But the invitation to propose, okay, stipulates the ramp and the barrier.
But again.
Yes, we don't know that, you have to ask Paul then.
Yeah, would that be?
That wasn't the original contact that we had with the foundation, the foundation called and said, what's happening in Lansingburg?
Okay.
Um we had suggested in our communication and the documentation that we had. That the one thing that we needed in the long term was a ramp, when we had estimates of twenty thousand for that. So um I think they, they fixed on that, which is fine, because that's another twenty thousand we don't have.
Right.
Wait, um. I think, I think it's worth, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, I think it's worth clarifying whether they're only interested in providing grant.
That's it.
To assist with the ramp, um and if they are, I think that's still great, worth pursuing, um. But if we could use that money for some of the restoration work, we got, you know, fifteen hundred square feet of library that's just empty and stripped down right now, so.
We have, um it's the, a more immediate need is getting the reconstruction done and paying off some of the other bills that have already been incurred.
Yes.
Um do you think it is?
But yes.
Yeah, do you think it's possible, would you speak to them and see if they would be willing to readjust or adjust?
We are the contact, though.
You are the contact, well, the two of you get together and talk about this, that is your daily Paul's idea.
Yeah, 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 but part of this is, um and I don't know, and Paul can answer this question. How fix the president of the found, the executive director of the foundation is. In dealing with us versus being vis a vis the library, okay? Cause all the communication since the proposal has come to me and I have shared it, okay?
Okay.
So the, that's one question, and the other, the other part of it is, it, the money, the way it was. It was um described was for the ramp and uh the, the separating wall. So conceivably, the separating wall could cost twenty thousand dollars.
But I hope not.
I'm going into construction.
Yeah, um yeah, we, we have an application that we have to fill out and you sent that along to me. And I said, yeah, we have to put down why we want twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
So we'll put that down.
Put what down?
We need a ramp.
But that's just it, we're just saying that maybe we don't need a ramp. And if we can use the twenty thousand or part of it, because of the twenty thousand, if there's two pieces. It will not cover the entirety of that ramp.
No, we still have to call for the money.
We will still have to come up with something to pay for that ramp.
And that kicks away from all the other things.
Exactly, and we have other, again, more immediate needs for the money, which is paying off the mitigation. Work and restoration.
The insurance company is gonna come through.
I, I don't think we're gonna know about the insurance company for at least six months.
Are they aware of the other expenses that we have?
Yeah, matter of fact, they work with um.
And they sold up our money for something else entirely?
That's why they were shocked, they called me, they were shocked that um, you know, we got denied, because they had worked with. And over throughout the whole litigation process.
So just to clarify, they were aware that we had other expenses and offered to give money for a different expense? Well, I think it was proposed as a one big thing, I don't think.
Who had worked with Quick Response? Insurance company. Where she's got to make it clear then that. There's, that makes it clear that so we had not had. The foundation deal, dealing with anybody else about. Library and friends.
Yeah, I think we're, I, I think maybe the ramp, my understanding is that the ramp came out of it, like. As it was listed as part of what was going on and they said, oh, we'll pay for that. So it's like, could you, they go back and say, uh, we're not gonna do that, we're, we think, we think we can do what we want here, but we still need stuff for this over here. I think that's the.
And, and what they were willing to pay for seemed to be what would enable us to open.
Right.
Right, in spite of what, right, and is outstanding.
And it's also, you think about it, it's something for them that's immediately tangible. To the point that you can stick a plaque on it.
Yeah, but we can put a plaque in the restored room too and say thank you, so.
So um we might be able to kind of, we may, we have other expenses in being able to open sooner. Right, so I don't know whether they would come to twenty thousand dollars or, or not, but um.
All right, so I think for this discussion, both Fred and Paul, do you think the two of you could sit together? And figure out who's gonna approach them, who you're going to approach and see if they can be swayed. To not focus the money on the ramp itself, but some of the other costs that we're facing right now in order to open and then fully open. I mean, I say fully open, use the space again um for the public.
What I'm not clear about, though, listening to this conversation, is that Alex has, has suggested. That there not be an ADA ramp, I haven't heard from the rest of you whether you think this is a good idea on them. So you're pulling the ramp out of this discussion without uh uh. Uh sort of taking the pulse of the rest of the board members about the idea of, of uh. Holding off on this ramp.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, same opinion.
Well, I think let's, let's get some idea first, before we, because what are we gonna motion?
Are the other expenses?
Paying for the mitigation, the restoration, the bit of the roof?
Well, that's supposed to be covered by the insurance company.
We don't have that money, though, yet.
No, I don't.
That's just it, we don't, so we're looking for other sources, this is what, all of this is about.
Application, it's possible we'll get um money for the insurance company, but here we need money for some other things.
Think that that'll be reasonable?
Strong application, I would say.
So where do people stand on whether or not we need to have an ADA compliant? Ramp at Lansingburg?
I think, I think we're legally covered, I think we're covered in the operation of the library, I think we have plenty of ways that we can offer services to any member of the public. Who they need, um and we already have a ramp. So we just need to make that more accessible, given the current situation, which I don't think is that difficult, having been in that space.
However, given the fact that we do want to rebuild that space at some point, access to that ramp goes away. And we have raised that consciousness and that anticipation in the public. So we can't put it off to something without an end date. While we do have expenses that we've incurred, we have to pay for, sometime next two years, we're gonna end up with an ADA ramp there. May, we may not need it to open, but I.
Why, why are you proposing that we spend twenty thousand dollars to accommodate probably about six weeks of work? When we already have other options in place, that's, that's genuinely my question, it just does not seem like a great, so very, very limited money, no, no.
I think that we've now raised that public expectation and that anticipation and.
Were public expectation of an ADA compliant ramp or just?
We have to meet it, and we can't put it off indefinitely, we've gotta figure out when it goes in and state that.
Don't we already have an ADA compliant?
It's not ADA compliant per, per federal law, but it provides accessibility to the library.
Right, and it's been acceptable for the last however many.
But you know, I, I know people talked about in the past, things change, so things that, new regulations go into effect. So just because something has been acceptable in the past doesn't mean that it currently is.
But we have libraries that are currently without either, without one at all or limited and, and it's been, it's still currently.
We have like contemporary evidence that it's not great, but it does exist and we would be better than libraries that don't have anything, so. Which also exists, I'm actually surprised to exist, that there's libraries that don't have any sort of mobility, it's like access. And we have limited, but it's just not necessarily compliant with whatever.
We still can't, you still can't get to the second floor stacks here, I mean, it's not like.
This, this place is an ADA disaster, sorry.
I guess I was just, I, I just wanted to understand and I like that we sort of talked about it, but like just. This money that's being offered and why it can't go to an expense that we already have, I think that's where my brain is, is unsure, because this feels like an additional thing, but if it's something that we need to do. But that, that's really it, it's the Troy Savings Bank Foundation, understanding that we have all these expenses and I know we're waiting on insurance, but we. Don't know how long that's gonna take, so that's, that's where I stand, I'll just clarify.
John?
Yeah.
Alex, speak.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna be very brief here, um there was just a report about ADA compliance in the city that went through city council. Um I would suggest, and the side office are, are in bad condition, the mayor's concerned about it, the city council is concerned about it, the library is a public space. I know that I have worked with uh non-profit organizations who are to host events and we've had spaces for them at Mount Idaho. And they can't do anything there because they don't have ADA compliant areas and that is the real problem for groups who wanna meet. The Lansingburg branch is one of the very few places in Lansingburg where people can come to meet from the public. And if groups can't go up there, you know, I know as we were talking, I know we were talking to Focus Lab about maybe bringing some of their tops up to Lansingburg. I believe Capital Streets don't remember which one of them was like, hey, you know, you know, there's no ADA compliant bathroom. It doesn't seem important to you guys, and it doesn't seem, or maybe, I'm sorry, I'm saying the discussion is making it sound like it's not a priority. But it is a very big, I may have finished thinking, it is a very big priority to people who do need to, do need that access. And for people who are organizing events and want to provide access to people who are disabled, that is really important. I would also add that there's gonna be an harbor report to the council on March twenty first. I believe, Thursday next. Um and the council is going to, to be taking a look at that, I mean, we have a mayor who has a disabled son who is wheelchair bound. You probably get sympathetic here, if you wanted to divert some of the funding, if perhaps the grant funding could go elsewhere. And the city might divert some funding towards an ADA, towards a more ADA compliant ramp. I do think that this should be an absolute priority, because I'm looking around Lansingburg and outside of the library. And I know this was a problem during campaign season, where is there a problem, where is there a place that people can go, that people can meet?
Okay.
I think we have, sorry.
Just to be really clear, it's not that it's not a priority, but if the point is, there is access, there is a ramp, it is not. The ADA compliant ramp, but it is a usable ramp that gets people, I, I've been there with, in programs with people who are in wheelchairs. That programs are booked the Chester Arthur room downstairs and they can get in, so it's not as if we're saying you can't have access. But how can we do this and prioritize some of the resources to what needs to be done to make that room?
I totally understand there's competing, I'm giving you alternatives.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I might write a letter to the mayor. I might write a letter to the mayor.
Okay.
Say we understand you prioritize this.
And I appreciate that. Just want you to know, it is, it is important, but we also have to.
Just to just to directly respond to that, I imagine if we had money to actually improve our Lansingburg space, it would be a much. Less time consuming and a cheaper option to make our restroom at Lansingburg ADA compliant, in my mind, hundred percent.
And it's got a big door.
Yeah.
Freda?
So um. The point that I wanted to make is that I Paul and I can go to the foundation. And ask for ask whether they uh are flexible in what they choose to fund. However. They came to us because they wanted to work on Lansingburg. So when Alex says we have lots of expenses other than.
Specifically at Lansingburg, I would say.
That's what I wanted to clarify. I think this money from the foundation is Lansingburg money.
Understood. Yes, well, we have mitigation that was already paid, that's been conducted that we have to pay for. There's the ten thousand dollars for the roof and then there's a reconstruction, which is uh estimated eighty four K. So and there's probably gonna be more. And if we have to do anything with any of the doors, it the 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 expenses add up. And it's all about Lansingburg. It's just which of those pieces do you put in first when there isn't a lot of money?
But it does sound like what they were interested in was something that is going to. Get us open quicker and none of the things you mentioned there, the mitigation or that is going to get us open quicker.
It seems like we can open in two weeks regardless of what we do today. Yeah.
Right, except we won't.
This has.
Supposedly we do to March twenty one. Then when you.
Money's on the table. Um Lori, I think you hit your hand up too.
I just want to directly respond to to John's comment. We are. Very aware that we are one of the few meeting spaces in Lansingburg and I look forward to getting back to being. One of the accessible and open spaces. Unfortunately, while we are in this partially open space. Uh, we are probably not gonna be holding a lot of events and uh so it's not, it's sort of. I want people to be able to still enter the library, obviously, but it's sort of a moot as far as event stuff, because we're not, we're really not gonna be holding much.
Understood.
And prioritize what needed for opening at this time and we're not.
That's all I was getting at was just.
And Carolyn. Looking considering what you just mentioned. They want us to open up, but the sooner that we can be a viable place, that would be restoration. If we can that room opened again, fixed, so it can be used, that makes us, you know, makes that branch. Providing services where it can't, it'll. It'll do what it can, right, but.
Right, I you know, I wasn't in the meeting, so I don't know exactly what they're.
Well, I wasn't either.
So you know, I mean, if if their real priority is that what we want to give you money for is to get your door open. I don't, I don't know whether they'll give us money for something else.
And besides, our door will be open, so it kind of makes it moot if we are doing this with the adaptations that we can put into place.
Well, I have an application on my desk.
Okay.
And I do need to know what I put in that application. That application is due before your next board meeting.
Right, um, again, I will say.
So specifics are good at this point.
Specifics are good, but I think we if in order to know, for example, any of us would want to say as specifics. We need to know what they can and will offer. Um, if they are adamant about it has to be a ramp, that's one thing. If it's going to be that they are more flexible and if the two of you working together, because obviously they want to deal with you, but Paul's gotta be the one that. Has some of that background. If the two of you can sit down and talk to them and see what they say, having heard this conversation here. And then get back to us as soon as possible. I think that would be really helpful. And if we then need to, again, I don't know. I know people don't like special meetings, but if we need to. Do something we can do, it says, this is the motion, this is what we wanted to do, but if there's some flexibility in changing it, then let's try and see what they'll do. Fair enough? Does that work?
I I also missed Kristen's perspective.
Well, Kirsten's been really clear that, you know, and again, he comes from a very particular point of view. Um, that he thinks we should have, you know, ADA compatible.
You know, he has an expertise that I I don't have and I don't think any of the rest of us have and and I found particularly useful to have.
Right, but this is why I went to Tim. This is this is why I went to Tim to see again what happens out there in. Other other ways of looking at it too. Um, we had to have other perspectives.
Is very interesting, you know, even if we had an ADA compliant uh. Ramp on, what is it, the east side of the building? The parking lot is on the west side.
You know, which is. To redo the sidewalks and the roads there.
Which which is where we would want ramp for easy, easy access, so.
There's also street parking there.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. So again, I think that's a.
I'm having a trip because my big.
Sorry. No, no, you're fine. I think that that.
But you know, wouldn't it also, even with your idea, would some money have to go into making it safe for someone to enter? From from the west side. You know, to go through the the kind of construction area.
It's not a construction area, though. That's my question.
When it's a construction area, then every.
Construction area involves work in the space, it's empty.
However, you you know, you want, I don't, I don't know. Uh, you know, is there some work needed and some expense involved in that? Is like less expensive than a ramp on the east side? I I don't, you know.
This is not the same as down here. There's plenty on street parking. You can pull right up to the ramp and you're fine. You know, on fourth.
So that would be the permanent substitute for the ramp on the the west side then.
Yeah, once you build it and spend twenty thousand, it's pretty well permanent.
Yeah.
These are commercial grade ramps, um, they're not temporary. So yeah, it'll be there for a long time.
Okay.
Amazing to think it's twenty thousand for sixteen inches left, but.
Okay, so I think we have a plan for the moment.
Could you facilitate what that is, please?
What? The plan, the plan is that. Friends and and the director are going to get together and talk to the uh people at the Troy Savings Banks Foundation to see. If the proposed, the originally proposed idea can be adjusted before he sends in the paperwork, which is due, I believe, I heard, March twenty ninth. So, but as soon as they have that conversation, they're gonna get back to the board and let us know what's going on and if we need to do anything between now. And the twenty ninth, we will.
So that's assuming that that we all feel okay with not having a ramp.
I think that's, I mean, I'm just saying, maybe we should have. If you want to propose, if you want to propose.
I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, because that is assuming that, right?
Then at the moment, yes.
Not not having a ramp, it's it's going with the existing ramp.
Right, which is fine, but I just think we need.
As well as.
Clarify that.
Herb site service.
I mean, I I. I'm all for it. I'm just, I'm just saying. I think we need to be.
Well, then let's go.
We can be specific as to our reopening. We. And when we're willing to reopen without a new ramp at this time, we can be specific there. We can't make a motion about the application at this time because. The friends have to make make the applicant, have to do the application based on what. The Troy Savings Bank Foundation is looking for in terms of registered chair.
I think Carolyn would like to have us document the idea that we are okay with not doing an ADA compliant. Um, ramp at this, what?
Sorry, would you build something new? It would be an installation.
Um, at this, at this point in time, is that what you're saying?
I mean, or we can take a a struggle. I mean, it doesn't have to be a motion. I mean, I just want to make sure everybody's kind of on the same page here. I feel like some people are talking and other people really aren't. I don't know, you know, I don't want to feel like we're pushing this.
So, all right. How about hands then? Who's okay uh in favor or agreed that we should go ahead? With this reopening on March eighteenth, possibly um with. Outputting in a ADA compliant. Ramp and. But.
A new.
A new ADA compliant versus what we have. So I'm I'm making that as the. And and using the ramp that we have with whatever adjustments or using.
Herb site.
Herb site. For the timing. Does that work? I I'm in favor of that idea. I think we are all agreed on that. Excellent. And I think from what Paul said, Kirsten was willing to show some timeframe in adaptations. He had a conversation that I have not seen in writing in any of the email that Kirsten had sent, but um we'll we'll. Go with what Paul said for now and then we can discuss this. Ongoing about doing something at some other point.
And Freda, can we try to circle back before the end of this week, just so we're not wasting time and don't potentially miss an application?
Oh, I have a question. Um, and I don't know if it fits in here. But given that a lot of people donated to us um uh to cover the deductible on the insurance. And are wondering what's happening with the money. And we've been getting uh feedback, you know, what's happening with the money we donate. Um, uh, can I get um correspond with the people who donated to us? And tell them that the library is going to open on the eighteen.
Nay, it's it's.
What can I say? What can I tell people who have donated money to us in December?
The eighteenth is not really the date that you were comfortable with.
Or you medicated at the twenty fifth of March.
Totally remedied.
I I have to leave that a little bit loose. I can't promise a particular date at this point.
I didn't hear what you said, Paul.
I said, I can't promise a particular date at this point. Um, we've got some work that we have to complete and I'm not sure how long that's gonna take.
Are you talking about the wall?
Hmm.
About the wall specifically?
Yeah.
Whatever it is we have to do.
Or you also, you also earlier said it would take two weeks, including all of that. So.
Yeah, that's reasonable, but I really don't want to broadcast that.
Anything can happen.
Would it be okay to say we anticipate an opening by mid-April?
You can say that. Yeah, anticipate, please go ahead.
Well, it's March eighteenth, that says by beginning of April, end of March.
Why do we need to say a date?
Just. His friend is asking for it.
Appreciate a date. I'm sorry, there are there are things that I have to plan, like at the beginning of our delivery, when our collection gets pulled out of our private status.
Okay.
Scheduling for my employees, which right now they don't even know when they're working next week. So so I would very much appreciate having a date.
So they do have a date and it's missed, what? What would your plan be?
It won't be missed, not if we're if we're the reason.
Yeah, but it would.
I'm not saying that you would miss it. I need the work that you've done before. Yeah, yeah.
And they have been given for special permission for years, um, and you know that, um. The thing is, as a board, we can't set the date because it's up, that is absolutely operational and it depends on what you're doing. Um, I think, though, if you keep. Us updated on the when, we won't, we won't be the ones that say it, but it would help Freda and anybody else be able to tell people. So if you can give us, I mean, almost a real time updates on when you expect to actually open. And make sure it is broadcast in every possible social media venue and everything that we had.
Yeah.
Then at least we're giving the public that work, but we cannot tell, we can't as a board tell them when they're going to open. Um, we're not the ones doing the work and setting the time and dealing with some of the obstacles that may occur between now and then.
So we could work with Lori around uh when that date is.
Yes.
When we choose to communicate.
With your donors. Yep, because these are your donors. Um, so yes, so if you can let them know.
And also, we have a stake in the building besides, I mean, not because of the bookseller. Um, you know, that's in a sense our operation. So I'm just adding the clarification. We can work with Lori and uh and uh around the day and how we communicate and what we say, right?
I think I'm gonna say yes to that if I followed it all, but yes.
And yeah, the Paul and Lori.
Yeah, admin.
Paul, are you in agreement with that?
Paul?
Yes. What?
That Freda, working with you and Lori can then start getting, letting her donors know and.
As soon as we know.
Exactly.
We will let everybody know. But we don't know right now.
Would you be willing to provide us, please feel free to say no, you're busy enough as this, would you be willing to provide the board just kind of like a very high level update, maybe like twice a week of? Kind of the progress that you're making?
Uh, I can.
Once a week is perfect.
Okay, cool, thank you. Because people ask us to, when, what, and if we have.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to add to the many things you're already, you guys are already doing, so.
All right.
Thank you.
You know, it's just pointed out to me that you probably know your Paul. Perfect, so I will give him a weekly update.
Well, if you want, you can see see the board president, at least to make sure. It's always better to have two sources of information or directed information and I can make sure everybody's got it. Thank you. Um, because that is what our request dot. Um, there's another question I have too. Paul, there's a question. Um, you were saying about getting the global, whatever their name, where is there? The assessment that the independent. Handover paid for an assessment of the roof.
Yeah.
Is that something that uh Mr. Ryan, if you're going to hire him to be uh our independent agent?
You're gonna hire him that age?
The board. If you're going to go through this and he is going to work for the library. Will he need that report?
Probably.
Okay.
But it's not our report.
I know that, but you would, you would mention that you were going to ask for the report.
I wanted to ask for it.
Well, that's a good thing, but you said so at some point, do you, can you specify at what point, especially if we are trying to build a case? To get some of that insurance money?
What am I specifying?
When you might be um contacting the hand of, you know, I'm saying it now. Handover.
How about tomorrow morning?
Excellent.
That's crazy.
It's not gonna be done. They already said it's gonna take two to three weeks, but I will call them.
Okay, so if you call them tomorrow and say we want it and then call them in another week or so to see if they have it.
Call it every hour and a half.
Excellent.
You know.
You know, put them on speed dial.
Actually all day with all of these people.
Speed dial, speed dial. We'll have to get you a very new phone. Okay, I was just very curious about that. Is there anything else on this? Yes, Marie?
I was wondering, Paul, have you had an opportunity to contact the representative, city council representative from District One? Uh, to talk with him about the Lansingburg situation?
You mean John, oh, oh, the uh, the city council, yes, yes, I did talk to him.
And?
Well, we talked, I mean, to get the information, I mean, he didn't say, oh, here's the hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. Yeah, me too, but.
Was there, was there anything productive that might have come out of that conversation or was that more information?
You know, again, there's um if there's our funds in there, you know, leftover, then he would make a motion to, you know, use them for the library. But there wasn't any real promises to the council.
I I know they can't promise anything.
It was just an idea of letting him know when he's interested, you know, definitely interested. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that.
All right. So on this topic, any more thoughts, discussion? Um, Mr. Kane, I will let you speak briefly.
If you're a city council rep, so I would probably reach out to Brian Rosman from district.
Brian?
He's probably, I know that Bill Keel was like against the library. He's probably, I know that Bill Keel was like against the library, um, tax levying increase.
Excellent.
Last time, uh, Ryan seems a little bit more amenable to stuff and the district, his district ends right where that one.
Right.
Starts and he's gonna swing district, he's probably, uh, someone's gonna, someone's gonna help you find some armor money and be your swing boat.
We have a couple of council people who I think are, are, are interested in, I have spoken to Ryan about things, so, okay, thank you. Anybody else, anything else? In that case, we will go on to our next topic, the parapet wall.
What, what? Yeah, Northwest Parapet Wall is scheduled to begin March eighteenth, which is Monday, which, uh, they have already. Scheduled to get the scaffolding up that day. Um, they did send, um. Uh, company to, uh, trim back the oak tree, which was gonna be in the way.
Did they indicate, um, how long the work is gonna take?
Um, probably three weeks or so, maybe a little. Now, they assured me that the ramp will be accessible throughout this process. I'm not sure on the front door, but we didn't have a lot of problem with that because we can go around to the side door. So the big, big concern was, uh, and you got taxed with ramp, uh. But, uh, they can work around that. And, uh. They're ready to go.
Very nice.
Any, any comments, questions, anything on parapet wall? No. Well, you get to do your director's report though.
Okay, the only thing left is, uh, down at the bottom, I mean, uh. The, um, safety committee is something that since we, once since the board met, uh, last time. Um. And we were gonna meet this week, but we changed that because we've got a, um. Webinar. Uh, scheduled, Upper Hudson has, uh, contracted with a company that offers this series, uh, of webinars about. Uh, reducing conflict and, um. In the workplace and also, uh, de-escalation tactics. Um, it's broken down into three different sessions. Uh, the first session is tomorrow. Um, so we will be streaming that. For staff. Incident reports, I, uh. Basically took a look at incident reports for this year, um. And so far with two months, we've had fifteen incident reports, uh, seven of those have been accident health related. And eight of them were, um, code of conduct, uh, violations. Um, we did have a one occasion to call the police in the, um, last two months. Um, they responded, uh, quickly and, uh. The person had left, uh. Knowing that, uh, in fact, we were. Also, we have developed a, um. An online source so that we can list people who have been, who have. Violated our code of conduct and are now not welcome back into the library. Um, since we have that available with pictures, it helps us to, um, sort out. When somebody comes in and has been banned. Um, to, um. Identifying. Yeah.
With the incident reports, how does it compare to the same timeframe last year? Running about the same, more or less, or different types? More, more?
Yeah. Not much. I mean, a couple different.
Okay, thank you.
But.
Um, what's your, uh, what does this? Register look like? Does it have like pictures or is it just like names?
What?
Pictures, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes we don't have a name.
Um, I, does it just come from security cam footage or something? Does it come from security camera footage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Paul, I learned recently that there's a mental health intervention team. Um, here in Rensselaer County, I, do you? Do you have, does the library have the awareness of that?
I can see some nodding in the back.
It's not, it's not, they wouldn't, you wouldn't call them when, um, it was, you know, you needed help. But it was more if you had a concern about an individual is what I was led to believe.
Yeah, we had, we had contacts, uh, but this is, most of this is ambulance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I was just surprised to learn about it and I.
Yeah, we've had, uh, and we, we've had, uh, you know, we've referred people, um, you know, to different services as well. Um. Mo- most of our incident reports, now some of these incidents were actually ambulance, right? That's about it. Except for all the other part. That we already covered.
Any questions, any? Comments on any of this?
Paul, when was the last time you reached out to the mayor and or the chief of police? Cause I know the last time. Um, we met, you hadn't reached out for them for a lot of months.
I went back and, um, I had to actually go into the mayor's office. Because there's no real telephone connection with, and I don't know if you discovered that, but I.
Yes.
You have to go to the mayor's office and I did. And I said, I would like to meet with the mayor and she took all the information and she was gonna set that on. So far.
And you haven't heard back?
When was that?
It hasn't been.
Okay.
But, yeah, when, when was this, if you don't mind me asking?
It was a couple of weeks ago. Um, I finally got somebody to answer the phone at the chief of police's office and they took the information and of course gonna set up a meeting. That was done about the same time.
Thanks.
I think one of the things we have, um. You know, the police had made some changes here and, um. We had to get behind that in terms of. You know, if we say if a staff member says, you know, that you're in violation of our code of conduct, you must leave. You know, if you don't leave, you're trespassing. And so the police. Sort of made a change after discussing this with. The district attorney. And now they do request. A trespass affidavit that says, you know, it's written out and signed. So all of the staff has that now. And they can go in and immediately produce it. You know, when we need to do that. And that's all the police were requesting is that we have this affidavit that's signed and says. The person is trespassing.
We haven't had to go that far at this point, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
That's what, sorry, just those before you had to involve, for me?
And we just used it, it was the previous incident of the patron that had a violent, uh, episode here. Months ago, actually probably, I don't remember when, it was a long time, last year, maybe, maybe.
Okay.
Um, and he returned and we recognized him, issued an order, he accepted it, but.
Thank, thank you for calling.
All right. So it's been used with the patron, it hasn't had to go to be shown to the police.
That was my question.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, anything else on this one?
All right.
Um, all the new business.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody got my email and they know which library they're working at with the salary survey. Okay, and do we want to set a date for when we're gonna aim for?
That's right, the twentieth. Did I write the twenty?
It was sometime like within the next week and a half.
Okay, so we have a date. All right, just wanna make sure we're on, and everybody was able to, to access this, or she?
Yes.
Okay. Even, yeah, they're very easy to, they'll just kind of give the information. I contacted them by email.
Okay.
Cause I just felt that was better. And then if they don't respond, then I call because it's hard for them to respond to that. Um, but everybody has been very.
Okay, some libraries, libraries are a little bit more difficult. One, I remember. Two years ago, one library wanted me to foil the information. Um, they couldn't and I think it might have been a municipal library. Some of these libraries have all this information at their civil service department. Not within the library, but if they're legislative. You know, if they're a county or a municipal, it's on their civil service. Um, website, so you can go there and it's all out there. Um. It, it depends on the library you, you talk to. I, I'm, I'm much more of a caller than an emailer, so it's making the calls this time, that's what I'll do with my. This time, but see what happens.
Um, also, sorry.
Oh, even on one of the libraries, I just filled out the contact form. It, it was like they didn't have an email address for the director, so I just.
Yeah.
Fill out the contact form and then they got back to us.
Thank you.
Um, if someone runs into the library that requests to foil them, I have a friend and a lawyer to routinely make foil requests, so. They could probably help.
I was like, I was like, oh my gosh, something, no.
And, and if you don't get it, it's not the end of the world. I mean, we have a fair amount of the Savvy's built in, so it's, we have a lot to go, so. You know, if we're missing one or two, it's not gonna.
I'd read that again, associated with. Sorry. Um, any other new or old business? Okay. Community feedback?
No, Freda left, um, but gentleman from Lansingberg asked me when Lansingberg would be open because they missed the books.
We're trying.
That's what I said. I didn't commit to any dates.
The work is ongoing. You're good, sooner or later.
Um, I have two pieces. One piece was that someone suggested that the. Lansingberg Library could work with the parks nearby, uh, to help during the time that the. You know, a large portion of the library is unavailable.
Wait, sorry, what parks?
Uh, there's powers.
Oh, oh, the Troy municipal parks.
Right, yeah. Um, another piece, um, from someone else is that the lighting in the Troy room is inadequate. That patrons frequently have to use the lights on their phones. To be able to see and they'd like to see the lighting improved.
Where, where is this?
Here in the Troy room.
Here.
Oh, in here. Yes, it is inadequate.
Good point. It's a double edged sword with fragile, delicate, uh, objects and too much light could be detrimental to this.
Well, what the person said to me, and I have, I don't know whether this is true or not, is that LED. Um, lighting does not damage materials, so I can, I, you know, I.
It's not true.
Well, that's what the person said to me, so it may have slightly research librarians here and, you know.
Well, I think, I think we need just more fixtures and, you know, if you don't do it that way, just run another. One of these.
It'd be a conflict of interest if I donated the lamp I don't want. I'm gonna put it right there.
Is it an alley you're doing?
You can actually change the color if you want to.
If it's a donation.
Okay.
It's supposed to not be, be paid. Give you anyone a kickback for that one.
That would be quite the scandal.
Okay, any other community feedback? Okay, I would just say that I hear so much, again, continually about programs at, you know, this library and how absolutely. Wonderful and multi, how many there are, how diverse they are, how wonderful, so. Like, I know, I feel like a broken record when I say that, but in each month, I keep hearing word, word, word of that.
Uh, I will just piggyback on what you're saying, actually what Mary was saying is that the suggestion come to me. And it's because of Lansingberg branch, if there's summer programming for parents of young children. Who are taking them there or dependent on it, right? If that programming can't happen or they have to go further, there might be other organizations in the very nearby parks. Be willing to set up something outside for the kids to do that is library focused. As a lot of that is transferable.
Do you know any of these organizations off the top of your head?
Um, cause IMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. You'd probably be the two, there would be my negatives, although I'm sure you can come up with a, a, a handful of others right off the bat. And that might be also a good opportunity. As a, as a PR campaign and awareness campaign. Look, we are the library and we are struggling right now, but we're making things work. And that, uh, does build a lot of goodwill in the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that is our first piece of public comment. Do we have any other public comments?
Yes, you know, right in the meeting next month is our National Library Week and that's the state, it's National Library Workers Day.
And anything being done, like it has been in the past or what, what's the, uh?
Um, I actually have out this year from planning the event, but Christine is leading that. Um, so we are planning to have that function, we particularly do to, uh, give the staff. An opportunity to gather together, noon and, uh, he's like.
So, yes, Christine, about details about. Who, what, when, where, but we. Definitely, well, okay, this Sunday's board's been invited.
Yeah, we, we stopped that a little while ago because we felt we needed to focus more internal on building morale and team. Um, and so we felt that it would be better to do that with.
Everyone seems deeply hurt.
The, the holiday party on holiday, the holiday. I'm, I'm sorry, I have a question. I just realized something. Um, the annual report.
Next meeting.
Oh, that's for the next.
It is in the drop.
It has been tabled, been told. It is there. It was originally on the. But doing a full summary was, um, with everything else.
It has been.
It was requested to be removed, so. So next month. Okay. Any more public comment? Okay, so.
Just for the minutes, um, do you know who Rebecca is?
I believe that is, uh, Rebecca from the Lansingberg branch. It says Becca. It's B E C K A.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing it's her. And then Carol Roberts, of course, and I don't say anything else. Um. So date and time of the next meeting, April ninth. Twenty twenty-four, five o'clock for finance, five thirty for the regular meeting, meeting in here. But Troy Room.
With our noon approval.
Yeah, great. The, the lamp that has been donated.
I'll see if you can find.
So, uh, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? All right, done.